To order, may I have a roll call, please?
President Byrne has given prior notice that he will not be in attendance. Trustee Cook?
Here.
Trustee Forster?
Here.
Trustee Markwart?
Here.
Trustee Takaoka?
Here.
Trustee Schenk?
Here.
Trustee Oppenheim?
Here.
Is there a motion to appoint a temporary chair for this evening's meeting?
I'd like to appoint trustee Cook to be the temporary chair for the duration of this meeting.
I will second it.
Roll call, please.
Trustee Forster?
Aye.
Trustee Takaoka?
Aye.
Trustee Schenk?
Aye.
Trustee Markwart?
Aye.
Trustee Oppenheim?
Aye.
Trustee Cook?
Aye. Okay, the motion carries. All right, so we've been called to order. Would everyone please stand for the pledge? Okay, our first item is citizens wishing to address the board, and could we also make sure that if you do want to address the board, that you sign in so that we have your name and address on file? Is there anybody that wanted to? Yeah, come on up.
We have a couple of items.
Okay.
If my phone would work. Come on. It's not. There it goes. Okay, Chris Meyer, 371 Cherry Valley Road, Vernon Hills. I just wondered, the first building in the renovation of Hawthorne, I think it's a garage. It's not aesthetically pleasing. Are there plans to alter or add to the facade because it's a eyesore at the entrance to our village?
Which, you mean at Hawthorne?
Talk about the giant.
Garage thing.
Yeah, there's gonna be stuff all the way around it.
Yeah, that's gonna have, yeah.
That's just the shell.
That's gonna surround it all the way around it.
Okay, so are they adding to the concrete? It's gonna be painted?
There'll be apartments all the way around it, apartments and retail.
Have you driven by the, a perfect example of us, have you, the Everly, the one by on the border? Do you remember how when that went up, that was just a concrete shell?
Right.
And if you go by there now, you'll see the rest of it wrapped around it.
So you won't see that concrete?
Okay, thank you. I like the new flashing yellow left turn lights on Butterfield. Thank you. They save gas and they avoid pollution from idling. Is it possible to convert a lot of the other lights in Vernon Hills to left turn on flashing yellow down 60, Lakeside, et cetera, et cetera?
Yeah, we've already had this, did you wanna bring us up to speed on?
We're looking at the possibilities. There's a couple of intersections. We're not sure whether they, it would benefit or not, but we are looking into that.
Yeah, we've mentioned.
I'm glad you enjoyed the ones on Butterfield Road. I think that is a drastic improvement.
They've been doing a lot in Wisconsin, and it really saves gas, and with the price of the gas these days.
Well, and yeah, I've seen them in Michigan and Iowa. They work, they work very well there. In fact, when the county, because that's the county that put those in, not us.
Right.
And when the county put those in, we've had a couple of conversations about several intersections where we might wanna experiment with them, and and our traffic person over here, Mr. Brown, is real good about figuring out where it'll work and where it won't.
Right. With the passage of the federal build-back funds and Governor Pritzker's ads about building Illinois, what pressure can we put on Lake County, the state, and/or the federal government to finally widen 45, at least from 22 to 83?
That's what Dave and, boy.
We've only been trying for almost 50 years since I've been here.
We're closer, but.
Yes, it's been a discussion since the 80s. I think when Barbara Williams first sent something to IDOT. There has not been movement on it. Phase two has been at least eight years, and really, we're looking for the funding, and maybe it is an opportunity now that there are some funds coming to the county that it would be moved up the list.
And it was.
Can we add any pressure?
Yeah, and it was our plan. That's the reason we annexed all the way down to Milwaukee.
Right.
Was to be able to control that.
Right.
As things have been built along 45 here, all of those new developments have required.
Yeah, the rights are already there.
Yeah, we're.
I can also add that as part of the phase two, the estimate was $74 million, and I think it's increased by every bit of $50 million
I'm sure.
over this period of time, so it would be nice to get that accomplished and widened.
Okay.
Yeah.
And my last item. I read in the paper a couple of months ago that Lake Zurich teamed with a local corporation, I believe it was Pactiv Corporation, to recycle Styrofoam by placing containers at their public works facility. I'd like to see Vernon Hills do that, or at the least ban Styrofoam containers. Do we have any comment on that?
Well, the recycling would probably go back again to, or.
That's what I told Dad. I said, I think it's all for you.
No, I think that's a discussion with Swelco and where things are headed in terms of that. I think some North Shore communities have implemented that. I don't know the specifics.
It was in the paper a couple of months ago. Lake Zurich did it, and I believe Halatine may have also done it, and they teamed up with the Pactiv, I believe it was, corporation. And Pactiv clears the containers, and the village provides the containers.
We can reach out to our colleagues at the Village of Lake Zurich and learn more about their program and the steps they took.
Or at least ban Styrofoam containers.
We can look into it. And could you make sure that you signed on?
I will.
clipboard there, right there? Yeah, it's right there by you.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, thank you. No, it's right, no, it's right there. Any other citizens wishing to address the board on something not on the agenda or committee? Okay, then in that case. Next item is a proclamation for Teacher Appreciation Week. Proclamation Teacher Appreciation Week, May 1 through May 7, 2022. Teachers Make Schools Great. I didn't write this, by the way. I want everybody to just. As I'm reading it, I wanna make sure I did not write this, okay? Teachers make schools great, and teachers work to open students' minds to ideas, knowledge, and dreams. Teachers keep American democracy alive by laying the foundation for good citizenship. Teachers fill many roles as listeners, explorers, role models, motivators, and mentors. And teachers continue to influence us long after our school days are only memories. Now, therefore, it is hereby proclaimed that Thursday, May 5, 2022, is National Teacher Day, and the period of May 1 through May 7, 2022, is National Teacher Week in Vernon Hills. And we urge that we observe this day by taking time to recognize and acknowledge the impact of teachers on our lives dated this 19th day of April, 2022. Anyone wish to comment on that? I don't.
Thank you.
I was just gonna say, so people who don't know, you didn't say you didn't write this because of the words, you're saying that because you're a teacher.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, I taught at Hawthorne 30 years full-time, and the last five years about half-time, so.
Aren't you, you're retired, and, but it's full-time retire.
Yeah, it's a full-time retirement job, so, yeah, 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 yeah. But that is quite true. I mean, one of the joys of teaching is when students come back that are now in their 20s or 30s or whatever, and will make some kind of a comment about something that most times it's something you didn't even realize you did. And it had a huge influence on one of their decisions or something, you know, that was said, and it's kind of like you're planting, one of the things they talk about, a teacher's garden is where you plant stuff you never see grow. Because they move on and grow somewhere else, and it's, that's one of the things that's really rewarding about the job. And it's the one day I used to say to them, today's Teacher Appreciation Day, and you're going to appreciate me whether you want to or not. At least at one day. Okay? Um, any other comments or questions on that? No? All right, then, summer celebration update?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So it's hard to believe, oh, go ahead. With the snow we had yesterday, that summer is even near, but it is around the corner, and I think it's been since 2019 since we've had our last summer celebration event, and I'm happy to introduce our Chair of the Summer Celebration Committee, Ms. Kathy Zerul.
Well, now I'm Kathy Moore, so.
Kathy Moore, sorry.
And this year, we're gonna rebrand the name. We're gonna take it back to Vernon Hills Days, which is what it started out as many years ago. So Mike's like, whatever. Our event dates are July 14 through the 17th. Our lineup that we have this year is the same lineup we had planned for 2020. We just kept moving it forward and moving it forward. So on Thursday night, we have a band called Temporary Binge, which is a local group out of Libertyville, played at Mickey Finn's, I think, last weekend. And of course fireworks on Thursday night. Friday night, we have Hi-Fi Superstar, I believe it's like an 80s band, followed by Jefferson Starship. Again, these are free. Don't have to pay to see them like you did last year at SummerFest. Saturday night is Mike and Joe, who we've had before, and also our headliner is Brett Scallions. He's the ex-lead singer of a band called Fuel. So he will be our closer on Saturday night. Sunday is karaoke, again, which is always very popular. We'll have our usual events, you know, the children's activities on Saturday and Sunday afternoon, bags tournament, petting zoo, and bingo, if we can get someone to run it for us. That's one of the things people like to see the most. So we're all set. Well, we're almost all set, but we've ordered tents, we've ordered trailers. We are working on all of the small logistics things right now.
Thank you.
Any questions?
Any questions?
Yeah, I'm wondering, what was the impetus for reverting back to Vernon Hills Days?
Um, you know, I'm the old timer on the committee, and that's what the younger ones brought it up because Libertyville Days, Mundaline Days, everybody has a days, and ours is called Summer Celebration.
And a lot of people call it Vernon Hills Days.
They call it Vernon Hills Days anyway. When you say, oh, we're gonna have summer celebration, it's like, oh, you mean Vernon Hills Days? Yes, that's what we mean. So that was one of the, another one of the reasons why, is just to take it back, make it align with some of the other villages and towns in the area. Buffalo Grove Days. It'll be very hard for me to call it Vernon Hills Days. I'm just gonna let you know now. It's gonna be summer celebration for me until I can get through that verbiage.
Shirts are gonna have to be changed.
I know. That's why we're bringing this up now, because we're gonna have to order our shirts.
Any other questions or comments?
Alrighty.
Thank you for that.
It'll be nice. Thank you.
Thank you, Kathy. Assistant Village Manager, the Lake County Pageant update?
Yes, sir. Good evening. One of the programs the village funds each year is pageant. Vernon Hills Pageant is part of the Lake County, Illinois State Pageant System. Pageant is coordinated by Ms. Karen Kalanowski and Ms. Kelly O'Brien, who serve as co-directors for the Vernon Hills Pageant. I would like to invite Kelly up so she can provide the board and community an update on this program and reintroduce a couple of amazing young ladies who represent the Village of Vernon Hills very well. Kelly?
Hello again. We're always super excited that you guys always have us here. So like he said, I'm Kelly O'Brien. Karen, the co-director, is busy being a mom tonight, as she should, but we are so grateful, and I know we say it every single time we're here, for the support of the board and the Village of Vernon Hills for the pageant. I can be super honest when I say not every town gets the support that we do from you guys. And one of the biggest turnovers, I, you know, and proof of, hey, this program really works and produces great women out in the community, is we have several ladies that have gone on to state pageants to be Miss Illinois, Miss Illinois's teen, and they reside here in Vernon Hills. So this pageant is really a platform that puts you into so many other opportunities. The hardest interview I've had, I've had, I've been at three different companies over my career thus far. Hardest interview I've had has been from a pageant. Nothing has topped it yet. No matter what conversation, negotiation I have in my career, the pageant world got me there. And so we are really fortunate because over a couple of weekends ago, we had the Lake County Pageant, which our queens participated in, and so I want to welcome them and congratulate them. So our junior miss, Tania Henry, was second runner-up. And then I also want to give a really big congratulations to Kate Anderson, who was given and earned the title of Little Miss Lake County this year. So girls, if you wanna, we'll start with Tania. Tania, what was, so at the pageant, you were given a pop question, right? So this is a question, none of the girls know, they just know they're gonna be asked something random, so what was yours and what was, like, what did you say to it? What was your response?
My pop question was, what makes a role model? And my answer to that is how that person will perceive themselves as a person. Thank you.
Yeah, so hard question, and Kate actually had, so you gave a speech. Can you tell us what your speech was about and a really cool thing you did in conjunction with that speech?
Well, my speech was about what I want, my speech was about what I wanted to be when I grow up, and I said I wanted to be a fashion designer, and I actually created and designed my outfit that I wore that day when I gave my speech.
Yeah, so. Right?
I'm nine.
So I mean, just at the young age that they are right now, they already have bright futures, they're gonna be amazing. So then a quick little update and sales point is, applications for the pageant are due May 13, and our pageant for 2022 will be June 11. So you'll see these ladies around town, but we're really proud of them. Vernon Hills, I always brag because I get to. And I was a Lake County queen back when I was a Vernon Hills queen, but Vernon Hills queens always do really well at the Lake County Pageant because we have great ladies in this town. So it's just a program that I really hope we continue to support, and more and more people continue to see the success of it. So thank you, guys, and congratulations, girls. We're really, really proud of you.
Thank you.
Yes, congratulations, and thank you for representing us so well. Awesome job. Anything else on that subject? Okay, then you also have the Ride Lake County update?
Absolutely, thank you. All right, good news, beginning on Sunday, May 1, seniors aged 60 and over and persons with disabilities will have access to transportation from any area in Lake County to any area in Lake County. As the board and staff will recall, one of the challenges for Vernon Hills residents using township paratransit systems is that persons living on either side of Route 60 were often limited in their ability to travel and return home to any destination that crossed a township border. Because the township boundary is Route 60, Vernon Hills residents had to contend with an artificial border when considering paratransit service options and potential destinations. However, Ride Lake County has been created to serve as a new, borderless, county-wide paratransit service to allow persons 60 and over and persons with disabilities to get transportation to any area of Lake County for work, shopping, medical appointments, and more. As you can see, the map is on the screen and on your monitors, and it's not only inclusive of Lake County, but it also includes areas for some of the areas traveled, such as Wheeling, the Barrington area, and areas on the western boundary that residents may often need to go to. This new program is sponsored by Lake County and Pace Suburban Bus, with funding in part by grants from the Regional Transportation Authority and local matching funds from Lake County. Service is anticipated to begin on May 1. This is a Sunday, meaning services will be made available seven days a week. Service times will be from 6:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m. There is a fee for use. It is $2 each way for trips under 5 miles, $4 each way for trips between 5 miles and 10 miles, and $6 each way for trips between, for trips over 10 miles. It is important to note that persons desiring to use this service must call the Pace Call Center to pre-register to be able to access the service and schedule rides. For users seeking transportation services, the call center can be contacted from 5:30 a.m. to 6:00 p.m. at 1-800-201-6446. Ride Lake County has developed a frequently asked questions page. Information on this new service will be on the village website, the village voice, social media, and Channel 4. Or persons can go to the website that we see in front of us, and that is lakecountyil.gov/rlc for Ride Lake County. And again, this link will be on all of our communications platforms. This will be a great resource for our community and complement our own cab connect program that we also offer.
John, do they can register online also versus calling, or do they have to call the phone number?
I believe they have to call the call center. I will get an answer for you on that, and I will also put that in the social media as I familiarize myself with the frequently asked questions page.
Thank you.
So amazingly enough, it's the very first line on the FAQ, and it looks like they have to call the 800 number.
Okay.
Any other questions or comments from the board?
Great program, and definitely the seniors are very appreciative of the village's cab connect program. It is still used. We did a check today before this board meeting. It's right at the new revised budget number that we presented a couple of months ago. It's still a popular program, definitely for those that need to travel at nighttime or times when the service won't be available. But I would say the transportation service is now available to the seniors and those with disabilities. It's probably never been better for our residents and those wishing to travel beyond our borders.
Good, very good. Okay. All right, I'd like to back up one step. I must apologize for being remiss. Did you want, anybody want to get any pictures when our queens are up here or anything? You sure? Well, I also wanted to make sure that we hadn't passed a photo op if anybody wanted one, you know, at the presentation altar there. Yeah. Come right up here if you want, or even up by town.
Right there, it's fine.
Yeah.
Go ahead, come on.
Yeah, all of you in the back, we can see you too, so smile.
We need, right, we need some pub.
I'm gonna get in here too.
You can either share the password with the whole community or you can put it in.
Right, the whole community. Everyone can log into Curtis' phone now.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. And you are correct, you do not have to stay for the rest of the evening. Okay, any other speaking parts from anybody on staff? No, okay. Then the next item would be the omnibus vote agenda. Is there a motion to approve items A through, once again, A through double A?
So may.
Is there a second? Okay, we have a motion, a second, to approve items A through double A. Anything that anyone wants polled or wants to ask a question about or anything? All right, hearing none, then, roll call, please.
Trustee Takaoka?
Aye.
Trustee Schenk?
Aye.
Trustee Forster?
Aye.
Trustee Oppenheim?
Aye.
Trustee Markwart?
Aye.
Chairman Protim Cook?
Aye. Motion carries. Okay, no unfinished or additional business, correct? All right, then, under new business and communication, approval and passage of Resolution 2022-013, a resolution granting approval to operate an outdoor special event for the Vernon Hills Park District located at 635 Aspen Drive.
Thank you. So this is a recurring event. This was held last year in 2021. This is an event that's being proposed for Sunday, August 7, from 7:00 a.m. to noon. This use is authorized in the Public and Institutional Buildings District with board approval, and if the board feels that the special event is appropriate, it is recommended that a motion be made approving Resolution 2022-13, authorizing the special event and subsequent special event conditions. Not sure, do we have a park district?
Hello?
Hi.
I'm Heather Rabbit, here representing the Park District. This, so normally, we have this event at our indoor pool, and I'm sure you all know, we are experiencing some renovations. Actually, our pool closes this Sunday. But we also have this amazing outdoor space, and so we are shifting our event to the outdoor pool, and then we will be utilizing part of District 73's property to do some of our biking, and then the running will take place on the Park District property. So we are very excited. We are expecting anywhere from 150 to 250 kids, and this is for ages 6 to 12. It is a very popular event. And we are just excited to be able to showcase our outdoor pool and the rest of our property.
Yeah, I like the name, the Mighty Kids Triathlon. I like that name.
It is, and trust me, they are all mighty kids when they finish this event.
Comments or questions from the board?
Are you looking for Valhalla Heather? How are you? This is great. I used to be in triathlons in my 30s, so loving seeing the young kids involved. Do you need volunteers?
We do. We've always needed volunteers, and this event cannot happen without our volunteers. We are actually really fortunate because we've had a couple of village employees that have come out, including Lisa Fishback, who was wonderful last year. So yes, we will need even more volunteers just because we are sort of expanding our routes, so the more people that can volunteer, the better.
So as we get closer, can we get some communication through the village portion of it and communicate with Kevin to make sure we get that out there?
Thank you for asking.
Any other?
Anything else?
Okay, good. Thank you for doing it.
I think for the official record, I'll read the conditions for the resolution. The condition one, the special event shall take place on Sunday, August 7, 2022, from 7:00 a.m. until 12:00 p.m. Compliance with the site plan dated November 15, 2021. Race marshals shall be stationed at appropriate locations along the race route to direct bikers and runners, and garbage receptacles shall be provided in the general vicinity, shall be cleaned immediately following each day of the event.
Okay. All right, in that case, is there a motion to approve passage of Resolution 2022-013?
Motion to approve?
Second.
Motion second, any other comments or questions? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Trustee Forster?
Aye.
Trustee Oppenheim?
Aye.
Trustee Takaoka?
Aye.
Trustee Schenk?
Aye.
Trustee Markwart?
Aye.
Chairman Protim Cook?
Aye. Motion carries. Next item, approval and passage of Resolution 22, 2022-014, a resolution granting approval to operate an outdoor special event for Hawthorne Mall located at 122 Hawthorne Center.
Thank you. This is also another recurring event. This is a request from North Suburban Cars and Coffee for an outdoor special event to be conducted at Hawthorne Mall, adjacent to the AMC parking lot on the east side of the mall campus. We have the petitioner here this evening.
Andrew Casillas, representative.
Okay.
You get to do your pool now. You get to advertise.
Um, yeah, I mean, it's our second year doing this. It was a crazy turnout last year. It was bigger than we ever expected, and you know, I've gotta thank the Vernon Hills Police Department because they helped us a lot. We're gonna need that help again this year. But, you know, it's just getting the community together, and people come from, I know people that come up from Peoria for these events. And it pulls in a lot of people. And, you know, I'm happy, we're all super happy and excited to get it going again this year.
Okay.
Is this a new location?
No, this is gonna be the same location right outside of Hawthorne AMC. It looks like that's probably the last year, right, guys?
Well.
Because it's in that, the main portion of it's in that expanded lot.
They have to expand it, but there'll still be room to have you come back.
Yeah, we'll figure something out.
And, yeah, no, I had a question about it, and it had, subject to the following conditions, and it was 1, 2, 3, and 5, and I and it was one, two, three, and five, and I wondered if that was...
Let me verify the ordinance for the resolution.
Yeah, and I just wondered if that was just...
Looks like just the typo.
Yeah, okay, all right. Okay.
So I can review those conditions?
Yes, please.
For the record. So this would be approval for a classic car show to take place on Sunday, May 15th, June 12th, July 17th, August 7th, September 18th, and October 16th, with the hours of operation of 9:00 a.m. to 11:00 a.m. Compliance with the application and site plan dated April 4th, 2022. Garbage receptacles shall be provided, and the general facility shall be cleaned immediately following each day of the event. And the Vernon Hills Police Department reserves the right to require police officers on-site during the operating hours of the event. North Suburban Cars and Coffee shall be responsible to pay the cost of the officers at a rate determined by the Village.
Okay. Comments or questions from anybody? Chief, you're good? Okay, yeah, all right. Okay, hearing no comments or questions, is there a motion to approve Resolution 2022-014?
So made.
Second.
Motion a second. A roll call, please.
Trustee Markwart?
Aye.
Trustee Oppenheim?
Aye.
Trustee Takaoaka?
Aye.
Trustee Schenk?
Aye.
Trustee Forster?
Aye.
Chairman Pro Tem Cook?
Aye. Motion carries.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Okay, that's, anything else under New Business and Communication? Anybody have anything?
Yes, I have something I want to point out.
Trustee Schenk?
So Lake County 211, which we all know is a free service, 24 hours a day, 365 days a year, where people can call in Lake County if they need help with food, shelter, counseling, support groups, mental health, a lot of good free services, and it was announced that Illinois is gonna go statewide now. So it was here in Lake County, so they got some funding, so it looks like, there's an article in the Daily Herald, and they fielded, I think they said, in February, 125,000 combined calls just for Lake County since it started. So there's a lot of need out there, and it's nice to see Lake County's driving that with the two, with the free 211. I know we've had it on our website and stuff, so it's good to hear that's going statewide now. There's a lot of people that need that help, and it's free.
Anything else from anyone? So we have nothing else, so, all right.
Nothing else for the board?
I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. Are we closed session?
After the Committee of the Whole meeting, so we can just adjourn.
So we'll do that, okay. All right, so then just a motion to adjourn the meeting and go to the Committee of the Whole.
Yeah, I'll second it.
Okay, motion a second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Right, the ayes have it, we are adjourned.
Okay, a call to order the April 19th, 2022 Committee of the Whole meeting. May I have a roll call, please?
President Byrne has given prior notice that he will not be in attendance. Trustee Forster?
Here.
Trustee Cook?
Here.
Trustee Oppenheim?
Here.
Trustee Markwart?
Here.
Trustee Takaoaka?
Here.
Trustee Schenk?
Aye, I'm here, sorry.
Is there a motion to appoint a chairman pro tem for this evening's Committee of the Whole meeting?
I'd like to appoint Trustee Cook to be the chairman pro tem for the duration of this meeting. I will second it.
Roll call, please.
Trustee Takaoaka?
Aye.
Trustee Markwart?
Aye.
Trustee Forster?
Aye.
Trustee Oppenheim?
Aye.
Trustee Schenk?
Aye.
Trustee Cook?
Aye. Okay, motion carries. First item of business is the approval of the Committee of the Whole minute, meeting minutes of April 5th, 2022. Is there a motion to approve?
Motion to approve?
Second.
Motion a second, any comments, questions, corrections? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Trustee Markwart?
Aye.
Trustee Forster?
Aye.
Trustee Schenk?
Epstein.
Trustee Takaoaka?
Epstein.
Trustee Oppenheim?
Aye.
Chairman Pro Tem Cook?
Aye.
Sorry.
Okay, motion carries. That's all we need, it was four, right? Yeah, that carries it, yeah. Uh, second item of business, a concept presentation of a proposed facade renovation along with site plan and landscaping revisions at 890 Milwaukee Avenue?
Yeah, I'll take this, we've got...
So our building commissioner pro tem is going to...
That's me.
Yes.
So bear with me, please. We have represented this evening from Gateway Nine LLC to present the concept for the redevelopment of 890 Milwaukee Avenue, which is formerly occupied by Denny's Restaurant. I'll invite them up in a moment. If the Cal feels that their concept plans for the proposed redevelopment are appropriate, the petitioner should be directed to begin the technical review process and appear before the Planning and Zoning Commission for consideration to approve the site plan, landscape plan, and architectural revision. So with that, I'll invite the petitioner up to present.
Can we operate that? Okay, just right, you know how to do it, Orlando?
I do not.
I don't need it.
Okay.
Okay, got it, I don't need it. Good evening, my name's Diane Menza. I represent Gateway Nine LLC, who are the owners and applicants for this concept plan. Our plan of redevelopment is to take the approximately 5,600 square foot Denny's building, which is vacant, as you all know, at 890 North Milwaukee Avenue, and convert it to a two-tenant retail building. Upgrades, exterior upgrades include a 490 square foot expansion on the west side of the building, and with that, it brings the building total up to about 6,200 square feet. Other upgrades include a new roof, HVAC units, painting the exterior. Additionally, we're taking the 63-car parking lot, which is not in good shape, it'll be redone, and curbs will be provided, and handicap spaces will be graded and corrected. We have a revised site, landscape, and elevations based on staff recommendations. We all walk the site together. Our architect is Orlando Vivequa of Suss Associates, and he'll walk you through these revisions.
Great. So, is there a site plan? So extensive changes and updates and enhancements to an existing site as well as the building. So just kind of quickly working through here with the site, the concept is to repave the entire site with a mill and overlay, add new curbing as well as landscape islands that are currently missing. Also, landscaping upgrades include basically a complete redo of all the existing landscaping. We will be reusing or keeping some of the existing trees and some of the few landscape plantings that are there now, a lot of them are overgrown, so a majority of those will get taken out and replanted with new. Right now, we're gonna replant existing foundation landscaping on the northeast as well as on the south, and enhance perimeter landscaping around the entire site. So with that, working for, working at the building, like Diane pointed out, the concept is to have two, a two retail tenant building, includes a new addition on the southeast corner, and then, which basically is gonna involve a complete facelift for the building, which will involve taking down the existing mansard roof, which basically is, wraps the entire building, and replace that with new masonry walls that will get built on the existing walls that they'll remain after the mansard roof gets demolished. We'll redo the, this east facade, give it a little bit of elevation, give it a little more prominence, and install new aluminum storefront window systems for new entrances for the tenants. Also, the concept right now is to, for the building to have a complete cohesive look, we'll either paint or stain the existing masonry as well as the new masonry, so it'll be a continuous color, and then we'll break that up with some new material, which will be cement board siding to further accent the elevations. Also include some new fabric awnings on the north and south elevations. If you have any questions, I'll try to answer them for you.
So I got a couple questions. So these are actual tenants in Wild Fork? I'm assuming it's a restaurant in the heyday?
Wild Fork isn't a restaurant.
Oh, it's not?
No, but it sounds like one, doesn't it? It is a packaged meat place, where you can go pick it up. They'll also have packaged liquor and beer, but that's like one of their freezer coolers. But for the most part, they're out of, gosh.
Colorado.
Pardon?
I think it's Colorado.
Well, Colorado is the U.S. office. They're out of, I want to say Chile, but I might be wrong.
South America.
Yeah, they're out of South America, that's where their main operations started, and...
Prepackaged like pork, beef, whatever.
And my understanding is some fairly exotic meats too, like alligator and elk.
Yes, right. They'll have all kinds of, you know, buffalo.
And they're planning an opening one in Buffalo Grove as well.
I believe so, yes.
Really? All right, so I got a question, so Heyday Med Spa, is that just like an independently-owned med spa?
It's actually one of the first medical spas. It's out of New York, and they are franchising and coming here. They're in Beverly Hills, they're in real high-end.
So that was my question, are they doing like vampire facials? I mean, this stuff gets real, I have a friend that...
They do a lot of facials.
Yeah.
And more than the massages. The massages are really neck and facial, and they have chairs for that. Yeah, they do every kind of facial.
Okay.
I went and looked everything up, and...
Right, well, no, I know someone to be...
Not inexpensive.
...to open one down in the city.
It's okay.
No, relax. Do you know what a vampire facial is? They take your blood, they put in a centrifuge, and it spins, extracts the plasma, then they inject it into your...
Oh, my goodness.
Yeah, and it's expensive.
Wow.
So that's why I was asking, because that's pretty high-end. I mean, they charge like 850 just for the first round, and then they do maintenance.
Some of these were...
Yeah.
Yeah.
But it's the maintenance that could, but anyway, I just know someone who opened one.
Yeah, no. They're high-end.
Is there room for, if it takes office, Craig says it is, is there room for expansion on that building? If they want to expand?
Well, they are, they are taking a little more, and we're still negotiating with both Wild Fork and them on how to, you know, how to accommodate their requirements, which is why I didn't have floor plans to put up here yet. Wild Fork has just sent out this morning, yeah, a floor plan that we're just digesting right now, and Heyday will work with us, they'll work with us. We've done other projects with them, with their franchises and other, they franchise other things, like yoga, core power yoga, this group has the same ownership.
So, I was, the question, I guess the question was, their current, this, on this floor plan here, they've got only about a third of the building, correct?
Yes.
So my question was, if they, can they expand outwards? There's probably no space because of the parking, right?
No.
Okay.
No, they wouldn't expand outwards. If anything, we may change that interior to, you know, straighten them out a little bit so that they're...
Match it up with new expansion?
Yeah, yeah, if anything. So we have to work with both of them. There's about 6,200 square foot, feet planned, and if they need to expand out, we might square off the other side. We have ample parking, so that isn't an issue. We more than meet the parking code. So if we need to nudge over Wild Fork, we can. One of the reasons for that expansion on, for Heyday is because to get equal signage, they were too recessed in to get any good signage and visibility. Wild Fork will have it on the side and in the front. I suspect so will Heyday, I haven't gotten any of their sign, democ, sign package yet, but...
Did you guys look at, look at tearing down and just rebuilding completely?
Way out of control.
Yeah.
Way out of control. This actually works pretty efficiently.
Do you have any views of the western elevation?
The western.
Facing the mall?
Facing, yeah.
Yeah, that's the one that's a little...
So that...
Could use a little sprucing up, that's the top one there.
That's the, yeah. Put awnings on, I don't know what else.
Well, remember, when you're looking at this, we're landscaping so, all along there, so the only other thing you could possibly do, and that'll get in the way of the service stores, is maybe putting over those windows there cloth awnings. Yeah, cloth awnings.
Well, some kind of architectural relief.
Make it look more pleasing and more of a 360 view.
Because even though it's gonna be landscaping...
We could also do something.
You're gonna be looking at all those new taller buildings at the mall.
Right, right, and they'll look down.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Something to keep in mind, there is landscaping here along this elevation right here. So there's foundation landscaping there right now.
Right.
Yeah.
And we could do something with paint.
Some form of architectural relief along that...
Yeah, with painting the brick or something like that to give it some interest. Yeah, that's, we've been very open to Village staff comments, so... Do you have any other questions?
In, are the, so I see awnings on the, on the south elevation windows, why aren't there awnings on the, on the west? Look like there's...
Wait, go back. That's where we just said we'd put awnings over those?
Yeah.
Those three windows.
Yeah, on the north and south.
North, east, and south.
Yeah.
Do they have, on the...
Well, it's their back room, so I'm hoping the windows stay with, I don't, we haven't seen their layout yet.
That's a bathroom?
No, no, I'm just hoping that, they don't...
The back room.
Back room, oh, sorry, that's their, so, yeah.
We haven't seen their plan yet.
We haven't seen their plan, so, yeah, we could add awnings onto that, that's not huge.
Well, it would make the, because you've got awnings and stuff on three out of four sides, it would, making the architecture you've got that's really nice on the other sides go all the way around the building would...
We go to the last side, which is the plan, a cleaner site plan? Yeah, that one. The ring road, actually, when we're marching around, Orlando found that there was a sign for ingress egress off the ring road into the site, right there. There was a stub that was left.
Foundations, yeah.
Well, and it was the wiring, it's probably old, so we are also going to have signage there, and that's shown on our, I think it's on the civil plan, which is, it's kind of very busy, so we didn't include that. The existing Denny's sign will be replaid and stay in its current spot along Milwaukee. Yeah, I think it's there. And so it'll match the building, and it'll have both tenants on it.
When do you project your tenants will take occupancy, if approved?
Well, it depends on how long this process takes, because we'll start, we can start CDs. How long do CDs take, Orlando? We'll hold you to it. We have to have CDs. The civils are pretty much, there's just a few things they have to do on the civil engineering, so those will be permit docs. Actually, when we go to technical review, we have to have civils done and a good portion of your, your architectural, so it wouldn't be long after that. So as soon as we can get to technical review with the Village staff, and then we'd be able to go marching forward to go for a building permit. And in fact, Mac, Mike Atkinson and I talked about the fact that, you know, as long as things are moving along, fine, and then we go to plan commission. He said, you know, we could wait maybe till plan commission, when they, they approve it, and then start the permitting process, which of course doesn't get issued to us until such time as, you know, we go through the whole approval process and back to the board.
Yeah, because this is just concept presentation.
Yeah, this is a concept.
Trustee, the east, east elevation again?
You can see how that expansion gives Hayday the opportunity of having, you know, visibility and it isn't sunk back.
Yeah. That's the Milwaukee Avenue side.
Right. That's viewing from Milwaukee.
Yeah, I think it's a great idea, so, right? I think everyone, right?
I would, well, we have to let...
Well, I...
Give our speech, but I, I think the comment would be if we went along the line and asked each individual what their thoughts would be.
You can do that first and I can, I can finish up with the, with the speech. If you want to take, pull the board.
Yeah, um, and what we're doing here is just pulling the board with, you know, they would like to see it go forward into technical review and all the other steps you talked about, so...
Yes.
Trustee, have a name?
Yeah, I was wondering, in addition to the awnings, maybe if you can do some of that cement board siding, maybe on the, on the western side as well, just to give it... I don't know if it would fit in because you don't have doors there.
I'm going to let Orlando look at that and I think, you might have missed the comment because you were... We'll do something there. I don't know if it's going to be paint or cement for, because that's applied at a different time, so, you know, something to make it...
Certainly something to make it more appealing on the other side, but other, otherwise I'm, I'm certainly okay with it.
Again, I'm, I'm okay with it going forward. Same thing, the, the more you can do foresight architecture, the, the better it'll be. Trustee Mark, what?
I like what I see, so, yes.
You know, I feel the concept's great.
Thank you.
Trustee Shane?
Looking good.
Okay.
I'm good.
Counsel?
Sure, thank you. For the petitioner, just a reminder, tonight's action is not a formal approval. It is an opportunity for you to get input from the committee of the whole as you go into technical review with our staff and ultimately to planning and zoning. It's important to note that the board can change its position or add conditions when final approval takes place. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next item, Town Line Commons, concept presentation for new multi-tenant signage and for landscape revisions on property located at 555 Town Line Road.
Yes, thank you. I'll invite the petitioner to come up and share their plans for the site.
Thank you for having us to hear the concept presentation for the improvements that we would like to make at Town Line Commons. My name is Mike Longfellow and I represent the ownership of Town Line Commons. We've owned this property for a number of years. I was actually just trying to find the exact number, it's twelve or thirteen, but a number of years. And, and GW Properties has recently acquired the old Petco property and we have been partnering with them in talking about overall improvements, really master plan, so that we can have a cohesive improvement to this property. And in conversations with Mitch Goltz of GW Properties and walking the, the overall site with him, some things, certainly some patterns emerge. One is general modernization and beautification of the property and specifically, certainly greater visibility of the overall shopping center and individual tenant spaces from sixty and from Fairway on the western boundary of the property become priorities. So, speaking with you this evening, conceptually is to talk about signage improvements and landscaping improvements along sixty and along, on the northern boundary and Fairway on the western property. So, overall site plan here, prepared by our sign vendor, and you will see in the top center of this plan, the, our existing multi-tenant pylon sign, which we did a number of years ago. Actually, I was here for the approval of that and, and we would like to rework that sign, basically rebuild it in place, keep the base, keep the structure, but reskin it, get a few more panels on that. And then in addition to improving the existing multi-tenant pylon sign here in the top center of the picture, also adding a, matching ti, multi-tenant pylon sign at the northwest corner of, of Town Line, well, as a southeast corner, but the northwest corner of the property at Town Line and Fairway. So what those would look like, well, first, a few street views of the existing condition. First, in top, this is the existing pylon sign and this is looking really at the, at the entrance to Town Line Commons along sixty, the, the car is westbound here, and then the, and then another view of that existing pylon sign on this bottom photo. Our proposed new sign, then this would be for both the renovation of the existing sign and a matching new sign at that northwest corner of the property. What you can see is that the existing masonry base remains and everything above it on the superstructure does change with new materials, aluminum corrugated panel on the, on the sides. The Town Line Commons name of the shopping center is reduced a bit in height, the, the goal here being to maintain the existing height, but bringing more prominence to the tenants themselves rather than to the overall shopping center, since that sort of name recognition, place name recognition is less important, we think, these days. But, but really to give more visibility to, to the individual tenants. Then on the next slide, you can see here a mocked up image of that new pylon sign design overlaid on the photo, the existing photo. And then here, this is at the northwest corner of the property, which is the southeast corner of sixty and Fairway. The west side elevation before, which there is no sign, except for the, you can see the little bootleg here, but the, and then the new sign, unfortunately hidden behind that in this, but in this rendering shows the new sign for scale. The new sign, as, as with the renovated existing sign, seventeen feet, seventeen foot, seven inches tall, ten foot, ten inches wide. And there's a enlarged view of that sign concept. Once again, this is at the intersection of sixty and Fairway. And then, to go along with this, I think just as importantly, if not even more so, is the landscape improvements to the, the overall property. These landscaping improvements really include removing some of the existing landscaping, which is, some of it is quite mature and while we are never, and I am personally not, generally speaking, a proponent of, of removing mature landscaping, really what it does is it forms a wall of, of existing landscaping, including some species that I do not believe in conversations with Mr. Atkinson that are favored by the village these days, which is not surprising to me. And when, when driving both eastbound and westbound along sixty and comparing it to anything else in the general area, it, it, it's large and full and frankly just sort of looks old because of that. It has more of a residential street and certainly not arterial or feeder, but just a sort of a quiet residential street landscape. So, the idea here is to, to thin out some of the larger species there, the larger specimens, I should say, and then replace it with landscaping as detailed. On this landscape plan, there's a mixture of both deciduous and coniferous trees here, Austrian pines and honey locusts and lindens. And then importantly as well, along Fairview on the western border of the property, so just for orientation, the old Petco property is right here, Town Line Commons in general is along here, and then Walmart is sort of just off the title block on the right side of the page. But along Fairway here, once again, right now, there's, there's a berm, berms on both sides of the entrance drive, there's a detention pond here, but these berms are actually quite high and then there's a pretty solid landscaping on top. So what we are proposing tonight, conceptually, is to lower those berms and to re-landscape those and in an effort to bring greater visibility to the shopping center from Fairway, from the intersection and from Town Line in general, open up view corridors while maintaining really nice and new and fresh landscaping, along with the two monument signs or pylon signs. And we feel that all of this will really, again, beautify and modernize the overall property. It will help us with existing and future tenants. We have heard concerns from both existing and prospective tenants about visibility, both in terms of the center itself, looking into the property, but also visibility as it relates to signage along sixty. So those are our goals, are to, are for beautification, modernization, and also visibility and doing that through both signage and landscaping. And with that, that concludes my concept presentation, certainly available for any comments or questions. Thank you.
Comments or questions?
Comments or questions from the board?
So...
Trustee Shane?
Yes, thank you. I have a few questions. So, really quick, on the legend, the, like, the spiral hub and spoke type symbol says existing tree to be removed. Is that, and then above it, no, 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 yeah, there you go.
Oh, here?
Nope.
Sorry, there.
That one.
Yeah.
And then it says exists, existing tree to remain on the top, on the legend. So, what are you removing here? What symbol is being removed on this drawing?
Yeah, that's a, and I, I'm going to look at the hard copy in front of me.
Because there's a lot of trees from IC that are being removed and I don't think we have good context here to see what that's going to look, what it currently looks like and what it looks like now. I can pull up a Google map and see, you know, and I see these, I mean, what these tenants are going to say about those trees being removed. I understand they're leasing the property and it's probably in your agreement, but you're removing a lot of trees here.
Yes, that, it...
And those trees beautify our town.
Mm-hmm.
Right?
Yes.
And, I hate to say, I mean, there are two very large spaces that are open right now. And if you think they're open because they can't see them from the road, you got two buildings on Milwaukee and Outlots too, they're blocking that view too.
That's correct.
So why are we removing all of these trees? Why do you think that? What data do you have that's going to help?
Yeah, the, the idea behind removing, removing some of these trees, A is the, is replacing them with, with species that are, that are, that are different and have different canopies. But, but I will agree that on this plan, it does not provide the best illustration of what exists and what is new. It's trying to basically do both at the same time. So that is something that I think we need to improve upon, is to illustrate what is, what the existing condition is and then what the new condition is. In terms of the visibility as it relates to the outlaw buildings, those certainly block the view of the center in back, but we've, we've looked at, at multiple shopping centers and certainly shopping centers in this area. Melody Farm is certainly one that we look at and look at the, how the visibility works there with Outlots, with Strip in back, and then how the landscaping works with that. And there are still view corridors that are opened to the, both the outlaw buildings and, and between those outlaw buildings to see the center behind. And that's something that I think is common in shopping center design with, with both the center and the Outlots, is to have view quarters. Certainly, we don't want, we want it to have a beautiful landscape, street front with, with gray plantings, but we want there to have...
If I may. So which trees are you removing on this plan?
That, well, there...
That symbol?
I'm sorry?
Is it that symbol that's being removed? So those are going to be mature trees and you're going to replace them probably with younger trees, less foliage, obviously?
That's correct, yes.
Right?
That's correct, yes.
So, so, we're a very tree-friendly village.
Yeah. Yeah, understood.
However, when you consider the, just the kind of the other side, when you consider the full length of Route sixty and Milwaukee Avenue, this is really the only place that's that heavily foliage.
Right, so here's, here's, I completely agree.
And that's why I, I agree with, the thing I like best is you're, we, we really need to see a, here's what it looks like now, here's what it's going to look like when we're done version.
Totally agree with trustee Shank here, but to me, it's not about the visibility, it's about your tenants. So, Melody Farms you referenced, I can name just about everyone in Melody Farms, I can name a few in, in your strip center, right? So, to me, I'm, I'm going to concur with trustee Shank. There's no reason to start ripping out trees thinking that's going to, you know, entice someone to take over that Petco and/or Toys R Us space, which are huge. You ought to consider subdividing them. I actually got an idea for you, but I'm not going to voice it here, but it's your tenants. I can name Walmart and Golf Galaxy. And other than that, oh, Bob's Furniture only because it's a big store. Okay? So, to me, a strip center's a destination, it's not visibility that's going to determine.
In addition, when you, when you talk about Melody Farms, most of those that are on the east side where Barnes and Noble is, you can't see that from Milwaukee or from sixty. They're totally blocked by all the restaurants there. So it's not because they've got trees and other things blocking the view there, it's because people know they're there and they want to go there and...
I don't see REI from other than if, you know, if I'm coming up the Town Line, I'm not, I'm not seeing REI.
I mean, you're, you're tearing down trees in front of the building on the Outlot. You're going to tear down the trees and now you're just going to see the building. The outlet, I think it's, what is that right there? That's Bank of America?
Yes.
Is that correct?
Yeah, I, I do under, I do understand all of the comments. I, I do want to say that it's, this is not an exercise in just ripping out as many trees as we can and replacing them with smaller caliper and smaller canopies. It's also, I would say that if you drive east and drive west along Town Line, that this is a bit out of character with the rest of, of sixty. So, that, our, our concept here is to, is definitely, again, to clean it up because I, I do think that it, it looks a bit overgrown in places and maybe some of that can be, we can go back and look and we can talk with our landscape architect about pruning and cleaning up some of those. I, I would say as it relates to the tenants, because I agree, I mean, in, in terms of being able to list off the tenants in, in the different retail centers, there, there are more that you can list off in Melody Farm versus, versus Town Line Commons. There is a bit of a chicken and egg thing here where we are constantly marketing this and constantly looking for new tenants and part of what we do is we hear feedback and, and so the landscaping is one piece of it, certainly another part of the concept presentation here though is monument signage.
Can we get our director of public works weigh in on this? I think he has very good, have a good opinion on this.
Yeah, thank you very much. I, I think we might want to look at where our concepts converge. Going out to the site right now, they're looking for visibility. I've went out there with my staff, we've looked at all the landscaping. Some of the landscaping is dying, declining, so I think there's some benefit to listen to the proposal. In terms of your comment, what does the symbol mean? When we were out there, we were trying to make sense of that too. What's removed, what's being installed? They just gave us a revised plan two days ago, we haven't had a chance to look at it. But I do think that some of these areas are, are overgrown and we could do better, but the proof's in the pudding in terms of what they're proposing. And if this was to move from concept to technical review, those are the details we would bring back before the board. In terms of the berm, the one thing I would caution is lowering that berm means there's a lot of utilities in there and you may end up spending a lot of money to lower those utilities. We may want to discuss that further. The parking lot has some issues, we may want to look at the parking lot. The detention pond has not been maintained for a while, it's got invasives in there. That's something else we'd like them to look at in the plan. The lighting, some of the trees have grown into the lighting, they're scraping back and forth across the poles. We'd like to look at what they're proposing there.
So how did it get like this? Is that just not enough maintenance? Is it just...
Well, those things are, are things that frankly that we need to look at. And in terms of the parking lot, we do have a plan and we have been improving that, we've improved the paving along the front of, of Town Line Commons up to the Petco space. And it really started on the east end and has moved west at, and it, it started largely with Bob's and before Bob's it was, I apologize.
Judge Gregg.
Yeah, thank you. And, and so that was a major refresh to that facade as well as the paving in front of it. But there, but we do have plans for parking lot maintenance. And then on the, the detention pond, actually I was just walking around that today and looking at that, so...
Has, you brought up the parking lot. Has there ever been discussion or what is the rationale for the north part of the lot from Walmart where you kind of have to jog up to come back down?
Mm-hmm.
Everyone's, it's often a confusing situation.
It is, yeah.
And it's, you know, it's concerning that, yeah.
It was just reworked, so...
Yeah, but it's, it's, you know.
That's...
I'm a, I'm a seasoned driver and every time I'm like, I hope that person doesn't come toward me and, you know, actually taking my kids to learn how to drive, I make them do that.
Okay.
They're always in those lots cutting through. So, I'm just wondering if you've had feedback on that or if there's thoughts about that.
I haven't, I haven't specifically heard feedback on that, but that's something to look into. Thank you.
Yeah, it, it just isn't a natural flow.
Yeah.
That's a great, great point there.
And a lot of people...[1793.36] And a lot of people.
It's a dangerous intersection, too.
From one, from one.
It is dangerous, yeah. They're trying to cut through.
Right, from one shopping center to the other.
Yeah.
You want that, that flow to be natural for one shopping center.
I love the fact that we're sending our, sending guys before they get their licenses to try, they can negotiate that?
I, no, I take.
Good to go.
And by the, the intersection where you come in after that, by where the pot belly and everything is? Because that is, I'm always like, someone's gonna get hurt here, so we, it's, those two things are not natural.
Mm-hmm, okay.
So if I may, I know this is on the plans tonight, what are, have you been your thoughts about redoing all the facades?
Uh, we.
As one unified look? I mean, you got parking lots that are in bad shape, you know, I'm sure when a tenant will come in, you work out some agreement to fix that.
Yes.
But what are, you know, a unified look?
Mm-hmm. That's, we, I will say that that's actually on the drawing boards and actually, and, because I'm also an architect, and I've been working on that with overall ownership of the shopping center. That's something that suggested actually, I think it was late last year, so we've been working on that with our.
Yeah, because if there's a tenant that wants to come in and they see the parking lot in bad shape, you know.
Yeah, well, and that's, that's why we have a plan to maintain the parking lot and replace sections of the parking lot, and we do have, we actually do have concept renderings that are not part of this presentation tonight of the facade.
And especially in terms of the landscaping and that, of what it looks like now, what you're proposing it to look like is a super important rendering.
Yeah. Okay.
Board, board have any comments? Back to one of the basic things, the signage itself.
Yeah, I wanted to ask about the northwest pylon sign there.
Yes.
So I'm looking at a street view right here, so that's the east one. Okay, so it's, it's just, it's about 10 feet east of that electrical box there, that big green box.
Yeah.
Looks like, okay. And there's a, there's a utility pole, or light pole.
It basically is right in front of the detention pond.
Right.
Correct, yep. Yeah, this is the box you're speaking about right here, I think, in this picture.
I'm looking, I'm looking at a Google Street View, and it looks like the same guy is here holding, holding up the sign.
With the same, with the same porch sign, yeah.
Holding up the same.
He put his sign down, and he took the picture.
He's like a permanent fixture there. I don't know what you, what you did here, but there's a guy standing there holding the signs up. Yeah, I just wonder, is, is that visible enough? But I guess, it's one thing when you're, when you're pointing your camera right at it, at the right proper angle, but, but when you're coming off from the east side and you've got that box down below there and everything else, and there's a light pole almost, almost directly to the east of where this camera is on the lower picture.
Yeah, and I understand that, I think pulling back and getting more context in the picture would, would be helpful.
Yeah. I mean, I'm certainly not objecting to you putting up a sign, but I wanna make sure it's gonna be useful.
Yes.
Other comments or questions? Because this, should we poll the board like we did on the?
Well, given the fact that most of the committee members want to see plans that show the landscaping as it exists now versus what it will look like, may I suggest a motion to table this item to the next committee of the whole meeting to, or whenever the petitioner can get better plans put together for consideration.
In addition to which, when would be the proposed, I mean, because it has to go for the Plan Commission and everything?
We'd like to get it done before we even send that.
Yeah, I think you want it before, as you consider concept, it sounds like you wanna see better plans.
Okay.
And I think the way to do that would be a motion to table, and that's not to a date certain, that's just until the petitioner can make it back. That may be the next meeting, that may be two meetings from now, up to the petitioner. But it seems to make sense that you, I think we'll answer a lot of your questions.
Okay.
So someone will need to make that motion.
Motion to table.
Second. All right, we have a motion, a second to table this. Roll call, please.
Trustee Takaoke.
Aye.
Trustee Markwart.
Aye.
Trustee Forster.
Aye.
Trustee Oppenheim.
Aye.
Trustee Schenk.
Aye.
And Chairman Protem Cook.
Aye. Motion carries. So we'll see you when you get that.
Thank you.
And I'm serious, the biggest one is gonna be that, here's what it will look like.
Yes, thank you. All right.
Okay. Next item is consideration of a report and recommendations from the Planning and Zoning Commission for approval of site plan, landscape plan, architectural elevations, and plat of subdivision, allowing an office warehouse facility located at 130 Lakeview Parkway.
Thank you. As many of you may remember, at the April 1st Committee of the Whole Meeting, representatives from JRW Property Holdings LLC presented a concept for a new light industrial warehouse building at 130 Lakeview Parkway. At that time, the petitioner was directed to move on to the technical review process and appear before the Planning and Zoning Commission. The petitioner appeared before the Planning and Zoning Commission for a public hearing on April 13th, 2022. The commission voted unanimously four to zero to recommend for approval the preliminary and final site, landscape, architecture, and plat of subdivision approval. The petitioner is with us this evening to answer any questions on the project, and if the committee concurs with the Planning and Zoning Commission's recommendations and determines approval of the development is appropriate, staff should be directed to prepare an ordinance approving the site, landscape, and architectural plans, and approving the plat of subdivision for the development, subject to the conditions of approval set forth in the report.
Okay. Gentlemen?
Good evening.
Yeah, could you state your names for the record, please?
My name is Dale Carter, I'm with Premier Design Build Group, I'm the project manager, hopefully for the project.
I'm Joe Arons, also Premier Design and Build Group.
I'm Jim Waldenburn, I'm the developer.
Okay. All right, so Kevin, as you said, everything was unanimous votes?
Yes, four to zero.
Okay. Comments or questions from the board?
I liked what I saw when you presented it, and I still like what I see, so, and I think also with the PMZ, their, their comments, or how they're showing it, we should go forward.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Do we wanna have anything read in about conditions?
I don't think so on this. I think all we need, we need is a motion directing staff to draft the ordinance as called for, and the conditions will appear, will appear in the ordinance.
Okay. Are there any other comments or questions from the board? If not, is there a?
A motion.
Motion to direct staff?
And the motion should be direct staff to prepare an ordinance approving site landscaping and architectural plans and approving the plat of subdivision for the development, subject to the conditions of approval set forth in the Planning and Zoning Commission report.
Okay. Is there a motion to that effect?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion is second. Any other comments or questions? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Trustee Markwart.
Aye.
Trustee Takaoke.
Aye.
Trustee Schenk.
Aye.
Trustee Oppenheim.
Aye.
Trustee Forster.
Aye.
Chairman Protem Cook.
Aye. Motion carries. Sorry to make you wait too long for such a quick formality, but.
Worth the wait. Thank you very much.
I was just, for the record, I'd like to compliment the village, its staff, Mike and Dave, and the entire staff. It's a pleasure to do business in Vernon Hills, I run my business here, and I'm very happy to be here, and I really feel like you guys support business, and I just wanna say thank you.
Well, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Is this, is this 24-hour facility? I know that we asked this before.
Sorry?
Will this be a 24-hour facility?
No.
Okay.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Okay.
I do have one, one comment they don't need to stay for, but I was just looking at these site plans, even on their north elevation, that's looking at nothing, there's even more architectural appeal than, than some of the previous things we've looked at.
I'm correct.
Well, that's, four-sided is always.
He's owned this piece of property for a long time. This piece of property's been owned by him for a long time, so.
Okay.
We will have a closed session for litigation and approval of minutes.
Okay. Is there a, then a motion to adjourn committee of the whole and go into closed session for, again, you said litigation and approval of minutes?
I'd like to move to close this meeting and go into.
Close session.
Close session as you just described.
I'll second that.
Motion is second. No, it has to be a roll call, yeah. Roll call, please.
Trustee Markwart.
Aye.
Trustee Takaoke.
Aye.
Trustee Schenk.
Aye.
Trustee Oppenheim.
Aye.
Trustee Forster.
Aye.
Chairman Protem Cook.
Aye.